Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
6:00 PM, we're going to call this meeting of the Mount Pleasant Municipal Planning Commission Tuesday, June 14th. The order will start with the invocation by Bobby and the pledge of allegiance by Jennifer.
Great. Dear God, I thank this day for giving us sunshine. Dear Lord, as we take on this agenda tonight, let our help guide our thoughts and our mind. Dear God, we want to thank the, uh, thank you for keeping us safe and watching over us. And dear God, please be with the people in our community that are sick and may have lost loved ones. Strength in them is all you know how. Dear God, we ask you to continue to watch over our first responders and our, our, um, police and fire that, you know, seek, you know, try to take care of us and protect them. Dear Lord, continue to be over and watch over our military and the people of foreign land and in the United States that, uh, help keep our freedoms, dear Lord. We know that all blessings come from you, dear God, and we, we want to thank you for that. Christ have we prayed. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to your life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a motion to approve the agenda for tonight.
I make a motion.
Second, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Agenda's approved. Uh, approval of prior meeting minutes, 10:22.
I make a motion when you approve those minutes.
Can you announce for the, announce how many people are here?
Oh.
And that there is a quorum.
We do have three people here tonight for the planning commission, and there is a quorum. Do I get a second on the approval of the minutes?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Flat approvals?
There are none.
Res zoning requests?
There are none.
All right, we'll turn it over to you for annexation requests.
Annexation AR 0510 2022 AR 1. Advocate J. Jose from Harper Valley Homes has submitted an annexation request, zoning request, and a plan of services for property located at 935 South Cross Bridges Road. The property consisting of 115.6 plus or minus acres being further identified on tax mount 127 parcel 20.00 and on file from Murray County Register of Deeds. The property is being proposed for future development. Uh, the applicant came asking for annexation, uh, per state law, the only way cities can annex anymore is for owner consent. They have to do a written consent that is included in your package, uh, to further develop property that they have out on South Cross Bridges, uh, to an R2 density, which is your 15,000 square foot lot size. Uh, the plan of services is in the, uh, package also. So is there any questions on that end of it?
I'll clarify, there are other ways to annex, but this is the way that presented to y'all today, by owner request.
Anybody here to speak on this?
Uh, we have the developer and you have a, uh, a list of people who's going to be speaking. So whichever, whoever you want to start with.
But developers speak first.
Thank you, Rodney. Good evening. Certainly appreciate the opportunity to be here to talk about our community. We're pretty excited about that. Uh, we're certainly, you know, pleased to bring a community like this to the city of Mount Pleasant. As Rodney mentioned, uh, we are requesting annexation and zoning tonight, and that's the extent of our request tonight. It's approximately 115 acre parcel, um, right behind, uh, previously developed piece of property on, and it's within Murray County called Perry's Place. It's a, it sits right behind that. Uh, this project will feature all single family residential homes. One, one home, one lot is what our plan is. Uh, there's ample open space that's created in the overall development layout. Uh, we're planning to use, uh, pretty significant buffers around some of the property perimeters. Uh, I've talked to a couple of the homeowners that are adjacent to the property perimeters, and that seemed to be something that was interesting, uh, to them as well. Typical communities of this size will certainly feature an amenity area, and we do plan to do that, uh, for the benefit of the residents that are in the community. Uh, this can include gathering pavilions, pickleball courts, uh, cornhole areas, things like that, just typical gathering places for folks, and we do have that, uh, on our programming. Um, I, one of the, the fam, or the property owners that I spoke to recently was the Parker family, which, um, Mr. Parker, Larry Parker, and his cousin Mark, who owned the property, just, just immediately adjacent to it, just a little bit down the road, had a lot of good questions, you know, and we explained to them what we're planning to do, and they seemed to be affirmative to, you know, supporting us on this. Any questions for me?
I think a question would be if you were going with R2, do you have an idea of how many single family homes?
It'll vary, of course. I mean, we've not gotten through the complete hydrologic study and all of that. So once we get into the groundwater quality issues and can, you know, determine exactly how much of the property we'll set aside to manage that properly, then I'll determine it. But we expect that there will be somewhere in the neighborhood of 140 to 160 homes, just depends on, you know, the exact layout that we're doing. Uh, the density is for much more than that, but that's typically not our style when we go into developments. We tend to focus more on open space and, um, buffers and things like that, that, that we found that most of our homeowners enjoy. They typically don't prefer to be packed in, so we don't, we don't do communities like that.
Anybody else have any questions?
Is R2 that you're requesting?
Yes. That seemed to be what fit, uh, with the, the current zoning ordinance is that, that we're here. It's close enough to commercial and, uh, other residential areas. It's not the high density area like an R3 or something like that would be, uh, so we felt like that R2 would give us a good mix of 15,000 minimum square foot lot size. That doesn't mean that all the lots are going to be 15,000 feet, but some will. Some will be much larger than that.
Have you had a chance to see the plan of services?
Uh, I've briefly gone through.
Okay, there were some extra copies out there, just checking.
Yeah.
And for the commission, what y'all are considering is two things, whether or not to recommend that the city commission annex this property, um, and also the plan of services, which was provided to y'all in the packet, and KJ just indicated there's some outside. But that's basically the city's plan to service this area if you annex it into the city. It's, did y'all have questions about that or the developer at all?
But then the zoning is...
And then the zoning, so we will treat this kind of like a rezone. So this property obviously doesn't have a zone yet because it's not in the city. So if the city does annex it, we're going to recommend that y'all recommend the zoning to the city commission to zone it at the same time that they annex it. So that's not something that would happen later, it would happen at the same time. They are requesting R2 zone, um, for this area.
We have several people that, that signed up also to speak. Greg Lowendowski?
Yeah. Sir, I'm left with a few questions here with the zoning. With 140 homes, the roads are county roads. There has been no mention of coordination with the county to be able to handle that. There's been no mention of coordination with TDOT to be able to handle the intersection on 43 for that level of traffic. Uh, schools in the area are at capacity. There's no mention of coordination for dealing with this, as well as services in the area. There are only two egress routes that are planned for this. Getting in and out of there presents challenges to our first responders. God forbid you have a, a big issue, but it would become logistically non-feasible to actually be able to respond there. Without those plans in place and annexation here seems premature.
I can address a couple of those things. I have been in touch with the, uh, road superintendent for the county, and, um, he has requested that we annex the 1,300, uh, feet of road that leads to the neighborhood because what Columbia is continuing to do is annexing everywhere, but never annexing the road, which makes it really difficult for the county to have all these roads. So we've agreed to do that. We're, we were going to do some road boring, um, in the weeks to come if this moved to the next step. It would definitely have a traffic study. That's not part of the annexation, but as it moves forward, they would, the developers and their use of that would have to have a traffic study. Does it need another left turn lane? I mean, that's up to the experts that are in traffic to, to do that, and they would be working with TDOT on that. So we, we've thought through that, but that's to other people to do those studies, and that will be brought back when it comes back for a site plan. So, correct me if I'm wrong, Corey, all we're deciding is if the land use plan is appropriate to, to annex this property at R2, all the traffic studies and all that would be yet to come. We've met with the schools over and over again and said, it's coming. And that's, we, we've given them numbers, we've given them the number of permits, the number of houses, and that meeting's only been two, three weeks ago. So we have been working with the schools too. So we, we've covered those bases, doesn't mean they're covered, but we've at least done our job, and we are going to work on the road on that too.
What, basically what this commission will be deciding is whether or not you can service this area according to the terms of this document. And then with the zoning, you would be considering whether or not that zone is appropriate based off of the orange paper? The factors, um, that you consider anytime you're doing a rezone.
George Morales, would you like to make a few comments?
Thank you. Uh, my name's George Ross. I live at, uh, where I own 935 South Cross Bridges Road, and I noticed on the paper, it has my address on there. I'm not sure why, but it's showing as this development is my address. But if it's okay with you, can I pass up some paperwork?
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Well, first I just want to start by saying, you know, sometimes these meetings can turn into, you know, an us against them type of meeting, and, and that's definitely not what I'm about here. I did, uh, recently build, uh, 935 South Cross Bridges Road. Um, you know, when I heard that this was, could possibly be annexed, uh, of course, that, that greatly concerns me because, you know, having a big development back there is definitely going to affect everyone's property value that's on the street. I mean, there's no doubt about it. Uh, every builder that's been on the street has followed the guidelines. They, they didn't ask for city favors, they didn't do anything. They came, they built, they, they, they're using, you know, the utilities that are there. Uh, and this can be done without annexing. If they want to develop something back there, they can, you know, they, they don't have to go through the city. Now, they do have to go through city if they want to do small lots. Now, our lots all average probably about an acre and a half. And R5, I mean, I'm sorry, R2, I believe, will allow 5,000 square foot lots and multifamily duplexes. Now, that is a possibility.
R2 or, or 3?
R2.
R2 is 15,000 square foot.
15,000?
R3 is 5,000. That might be what you're...
Okay, what's R1?
18,000 square foot.
Okay.
And chime in Rodney if I'm saying it wrong. I think that's right, okay.
Okay. So they're asking for 15,000, or it could also have duplexes too.
My understanding, I mean, you heard him say that wasn't their intent.
Right.
I think that's in the zoning, yes.
Right, yes ma'am. Okay, so, you know, right off the bat, it does not conform to this area. You know, we build out here to be in the country, and then all of a sudden we're changing this into small lots. You know, I don't think that's right. I don't think it's right that our property value should be affected because they want to come out here and, and develop smaller lots. They can do larger lots, you know, they just want to make more profit. I understand that, I do too, you know, I, I love business, I love growing, you know, but also I'm very conscious of my neighbor and my neighbor's property values. When I go in and do a development, I always increase the property values around me. I never decrease, and there's a right way to do that. But also want to bring to your attention, um, when I was building my property, I had a lot of water problems. And if you want to look at that aerial there, all those veins right there is water. Now, this is row crop land. That means that they are trenching this land. So this water is jumping over those trenches and forming these veins here. So there's definitely a water issues on this property. Now, I can, I don't know where my water problem is coming from, but my house is right here on this corner lot. I also know that the other neighbor who asked me about their water problem is adjacent, completely adjacent to my property. She's had major water problems too. I've had to put in a very expensive pumping system, and that pump has always got water at the bottom of it. There's something going on there. The water table's low there, or something is going on there. If you dig down three to four feet, you're hitting water out there, you know, so I don't know how well these guys, I don't know if they've done any soil testing out there, but there's definitely water issues out there. And that water, if you're not going to be putting in drainage systems, pumped out system, it's going to have to go somewhere. So I don't know where they're going to contain that, but, um, you know, this whole, this whole area right here, even if they did one acre lots, could affect these homes there if there's a water problem. There's a creek on this property too. When you see those tree lines like that, the reason why those are not being harvested is because that, there's water issues or low issues right there, moist issues. That's why that vegetation grows, grows in that area. If you look on your next page, it's going to show you the full distance of Mount Pleasant. And that has not got affected by this year's enrollment yet. We know that there's a lot of growth going on in Mount Pleasant right now. Mount Pleasant is rocking and rolling, downtown's looking really good. You guys have done a really nice job. It's, it's, it's like a gem around here. But there is, there is always so many students that can go to this school. And with all this development going on, you can see there's only 53 students left, seats left for that, for just elementary school alone. And the families that are coming here that are being able to afford these new homes, they're larger families. I, I'll just give you an example. I've helped five families from California come here, and a lot of them, they're just strong Christian families that they like to, um, invest in kids, and they adopt foster kids. And the first family that I helped had nine adopted kids. The second one had 10. The third one had, uh, four biological kids. Then the next family had two biological and two adopted kids, and the next family had two biological and two adopted kids, young children. Just those families alone right there would almost fill up this elementary school. So, you know, that's something that we need to consider, but I think the bottom line for me is, is that, you know, we invested in the community, and then to have someone come in and not, uh, enhance our properties after all the money we put into it. Everyone that lives on the street, this, for most people, this is their biggest investment. This is what they put their life savings into. This is what they depend on for the future to sell, to retire, to age out of, you know, so, you know, I, I don't think this conforms, not even close, uh, to what is already developed in this area. My, my home and all these other homes over here is contin, is considered, uh, Perry's Place, Section 1. On the tax card, what is for sale, what is, what is being annexed or being, trying to be annexed, is also Perry's Place, Section 1. Well, I don't know how you can separate restrictions, I'm, I'm sure there's a way to do it, but our restrictions were very tough. The owner made us do, you know, we had to do expensive homes, all brick, and if you do anything in the backyard, you got to match the building with brick, facade, you know, even the mailbox has got to match the building, you know, so, you know, the, the owner's already put in very high standards, and then for them to want to go and allow a development to come in there that's not going to conform anything like this, I, I think is definitely the, the wrong way to go. There's other areas that can do this. Uh, this, this area's already established. Thank you.
Thanks. Jessica Evans?
Hi, um, I'm one of the residents on the road. I actually, um, it took a year to get this house built. Um, I'm an English teacher, and I'd been working in Columbia, and I wanted to move to Mount Pleasant into the country. Um, and I fell in love with this area. Um, we did have to follow very strict rules in order to do this, and I expected the back lot to be developed because of that area, but I did not expect it to be 140. Um, and this is going to really lower property values throughout because we needed to be brick. It couldn't be unless the house itself couldn't be less than 1,800 square feet. And so then you had like acre plus lots. Um, so this is going to put a real strain. And I was also told by my contractor that to build back there would be potential problems with sewage and things like that as well, um, that it will not hold. And even one of the houses on my street had problems, uh, with sewage. Thankfully, I did not, I was not one of them.
And that's why they wanted annexed into the city where it would have sewer services.
And, but when, if they annex into the city, um, they will lower our property values. And, um, I did have a question. Is the land next to the city? Is it attached to the city?
I think there's two parcels in between.
Can the city annex?
Yes.
Something that's not attached to it?
Yes.
It's contiguous because they're annexing the road.
They're annexing the road. It doesn't necessarily have to be contiguous. We're choosing to annex the road.
Okay.
Yeah.
So one of my other questions was on the exclusions. Why are some lots listed together?
This, so, we did a kind of title search on this property. And my assistant went in and put every property, this was all one parcel, and then as they were parceled out, they were in different deeds. And so that's each property that was parceled out according to when those deeds were done. But that's why some of them are together and some of them are not.
Okay, well, I believe mines is actually, should be separated, um, because one of the lots is mine, and it's being paired with another lot. Um, and I would say that I, um, I am against it. I don't think it's going to be good for Mount Pleasant. And having, my parents actually used to have land right behind them, and the developer came in, and they were originally told it would be a certain way, and they ended up being able to put 80 houses, like, to store. I mean, it was really crazy. Um, and I just really think it's a bad idea, and I would highly advise rethinking the strain that it will put on Mount Pleasant and part of the charm that is what makes Mount Pleasant so special anyway. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Jake Wiliver?
Good evening. Um, I'm Jake Wiliver. Uh, own some property across the road from the proposed development. Uh, timed my arrival to get here behind Mr. Morales, so he could hit all the good points, and I could just kind of come in and gloss over what he said. So, uh, I have lived across the road. We moved there in 1985, and, uh, very partial to the area, and feel like I can speak knowledgeably about the area. Uh, one thing that I would like to point out, your, your agenda doesn't say that they're seeking R2 zoning. Uh, I, I would argue that that's not sufficient public notice, that, that if the public doesn't know what exactly they're seeking, could have been industrial, it could have been commercial, it could have been anything, but you're not telling the community what they're actually wanting to do out there. I would venture to say that if the community knew with 140 to 160 homes, there, there'd be more people here than that, but nevertheless, uh, I, I want to point that out to you. Um, as a resident or as someone who's lived out there, um, very partial to the area, um, it's, as Mr. Morales said, it's nice because it's, it's country. It's, it's, uh, a few homes on relatively big lots. Um, I've driven up and down South Cross Bridges Road more times than I can count. There's no shoulder, it doesn't drain well in areas, it, it's got its own set of issues. Uh, I know there wasn't a traffic study done, but, but I do know that as part of your plan of services, you're, you're saying you're committing as a city that you're going to take over that road, and, and that that road's going to be passable and, and service the, the community of 140 to 160 new neighbors that I'm going to have out there. Uh, I, I'm here to tell you tonight that you're taking a little bit of liability there. Uh, I know water, uh, when I looked at your plan of services, it just says, well, the city's going to provide water. It, it doesn't tell me what that's going to do to my water quality, it doesn't tell me what kind of fire flow that you're going to have and, and the ability to put out a fire if there is one in the area. Lots of things that I don't really understand from, from looking at just what I've, what I received when I walked in tonight. Uh, as far as the schools go, I can tell you from some experience, I hadn't missed a school board meeting, uh, maybe one, but, uh, since about 2004. Uh, there's no Mount Pleasant school on the five-year plan for Murray County Schools. You put 140 to 160 homes out there, and, and you need to deal with the reality that you may be educating those kids in portable buildings. I, I would love for you to reach out to the school system and maybe talk that through with them before you get too deep into this process. That, that's my glossing overview of, of what you see in the plan of services from the 30,000-foot view. I want to tell you, Mr. Jose referred to his community, and, and in a sense, it would be his community, because if you bring 140 or 160 homes and drop into the country, it's not our community anymore. It's a whole different animal. And I know you guys don't make a lot of money for being here tonight. I know you do it because you're, you're interested in your community and the city of Mount Pleasant. And, and it's for that very reason that I would ask you, look, look hard at this. I mean, the city's made mistakes in the past. Don't, don't let this be another one. I know you guys have got developments going in other parts of the city and, and other parts outside the city. Uh, some of those are going to be fairly big developments. Some of those fit, some of those might not. I can tell you this one doesn't fit, and I would ask you to look hard at it tonight.
Thank you, sir. We got one more person signed up, Michael, I was, I can't read the last part of the name. Oh, sorry.
I don't know that I have anything different to say than anybody else said. I think it's been presented very well. Kind of feel like a hypocrite because I moved here, we built a lot in the country, but at the same point, we've got a beautiful area out there. And, uh, like it's been said, you know, there was guidelines when these houses were built, you had to do it this way. If I want to put a garage in my backyard, it's got to be a brick garage. I wouldn't want to put a brick garage if I was just doing it, but if I decide to do one, that's what I got to do because that's what it says. So, uh, you know, if something goes in behind us, and then, and I knew it was probably inevitable when we bought the lot, moved the facility, it's peaceful out there right now in the morning. You step out at 5:00 in the morning, and you hear the birds chirping, I hear the chickens down the road, uh, you put that many homes back in there, you're not going to hear anything, but cars starting. Uh, the one thing I did hear that was a little concerning to me was something about the city annexing the first part of the road, but you got an access point all the way around the corner here. The people are going to come out, these people aren't going to drive all the way through the community, they're going to come out down here. And I can tell you from living about six houses from that corner, as soon as they come around that corner, it's like the Indy 500. The accelerator drops and they're to the highway. And so, uh, the road's too narrow to support that many people. There's going to have to be speed control out there. If this many people get out there, it's not going to be safe. There's implements and tractors, combines, trucks go down this road because, uh, people farm in, in this area. So, uh, you know, I can't, you can't stop somebody from selling their ground and, and doing things, but I think if it's going to be built back there, it needs to conform to everything that's around the outside right now, and it's got to be at least a one acre lot. That's my opinion.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You got a question?
I do. Um, about Perry's Place and restrictions, and is that, like, is, is this, does this have, as stands today, does this have to live under the Perry Place restrictions?
It's excluded from the Perry Place restrictions as filed. So, and that's, my office verified that. I think that would be on the developer to say yes or no whether that exists.
No, we understand that every house, as it was built along Cross Bridges, had to adhere to those restrictions, but it's not this property in question.
May I speak to that? We appeared about 10 years...
Come back up again, please.
It's okay, we want to hear.
We appeared on this matter. The planning commission turned down this project about 10 years ago, but as part of what they did give Mr. Johnson, they allowed him to build out the road from the 11 lots that are now built today that, that are acre lots or so, uh, because they felt like that was part of the community building. But one of the restrictions that the planning commission put, one of the strings, I guess you'd say on that, was that he imposed those restrictions. Those restrictions were presented to you guys 10 years ago.
Not in the county.
Well, actually, it was... Well, actually, it was within your.
Regional planning commission.
Yeah.
Okay.
It was within your urban growth boundary. They weren't asking for annexation, so it was still you guys. But you guys did require that they put those restrictions down to ensure that the housing didn't get too dense.
Okay.
But that was on the properties that were approved. Right.
Yeah. Okay.
And he was referring to the urban growth boundary. So y'all used to be a regional planning commission. We still have an urban growth boundary, but now you are municipal planning commission. That means that you don't regulate the urban growth boundary unless it's annexed into the city.
Rodney, I got to quit. Has a hydraulic study been done for fire flow in that area and what it would affect on South Cross Bridges?
That will all come forth, you know, with construction plans, you know, site plans, you know, once the LOAs and all that stuff are filled out for the letter of availabilities and, you know, that will be on the development.
We don't know that there's going to be any impacts right now to the current.
So all you're determining now is if the zoning is appropriate because you wouldn't do all those studies until that happens and then that the developer has to determine what, what can and can't do.
And then on the streets, the question comes about it, were cities looking to annex in the first part of the street? Would, would the developer be responsible for the turning lanes and stuff? Because it references just in the annexed area.
Whatever the traffic, yeah, whatever the traffic study shows needs to happen will be the developer's responsibility.
I think from the city's perspective, we're trying to make sure that the road as it is right now is standard. Um, and then once that's determined, any improvement to the road would be handled by the developer. Um, that goes through our planning commission. That comes back through y'all if you, through a site plan or a, through the subdivision regulations, but that's something that would be addressed later. The plan of services is basically saying, we can provide these services the way that we can provide them to any other development within the city.
I think it would be helpful if Cory, if you could explain some, because, you know, the, the property owner has every, uh, right to request this rezone, but several things have been brought up that I think are completely out of our control.
Okay.
Um, the schools, I mean, the, what we have on the books for within the city limits are going to go well beyond that 53. That, that's something that is totally, I don't believe that we have any ability as a city government to say the schools are going to be, that's, the, the schools have to deal with that. Um, restrictions of the old lots, stormwater and water issues, those are all things would have to be part of this site plan, right? I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page and understanding what we can and can't be a part of.
So what we're considering is whether or not the city wants to take in this property. So the developer right now, if they developed it as is, they would have to go through the county planning commission and they would have to follow the county's rules for doing that. Um, you heard Mr. Wolver say last time when they, when Perry's Place came through, they went through y'all because you were a regional planning commission. We don't have that anymore. So the only reason it's here now is because they'd like to be part of the city. They'd like to be part of the city so that they can get city services because we are not going to provide city services outside of the city. Um, so they have a right to develop one way or another. We're just, y'all are deciding whether you want it to be under the city's jurisdiction or you want to leave it under the county. Um, the, a lot of these issues will be addressed, like you said, the, um, how the road gets handled, how drainage gets handled, how, um, the development in general, all would happen through the planning process. And I'll say the wrong words, it's not a site plan, it is, yeah, subdivision and construction drawing. Um, and so that's something that would come back to y'all later on. This is very similar to what y'all do with a rezone. You know, you're saying, is this appropriate for this area? Yes or no?
The same finding is a fact.
Yeah. So there's the two things that you're saying today is do we want to annex it according to this plan of services? Um, and then the second is if we do, is R2 the appropriate zone according to that?
Can we even consider R2 if it wasn't in the notification?
I believe it was in the notice. Is that, I've asked.
I had to pull it up back up on my computer, what I sent.
Okay.
It would, I would say this has to have been the city commission, too.
Yeah. Um, should have been in the, in the paper.
It was in the paper. I don't know exactly what the notice said exactly. I mean, it's been a couple of weeks since I've read it.
Okay. Um, if it was not in the paper, then I would concede that Mr. Wolver could be right, we should redo the notice. But I believe that the notice that went in the paper said R2 zoning.
Anybody want to speak that did not sign up today?
Will, do you have anything you want to add or?
Uh, well, I think the, I think we've had some good comments and good explanations from the applicant. Um, we don't deal with annexations often here, so feel free to ask questions about process. Just for everyone's benefit, this is really the first step in considering annexation. The big questions like Cory mentioned are, is this lot, does it warrant bringing it into the city and how should you zone it? Um, beyond that, if it is annexed, if it is zoned, the developer will be bringing a preliminary plan, uh, construction drawings and also divisions, just like any other residential development. So we can, we can address those more technical issues and concerns at that moment. If you have any other questions, I'd have you to answer those.
Do you like to speak, man? Could you come up and state your name where I can get it on the sheet, please?
My name is Carol Thomason. I'm a lifelong resident here of Mount Pleasant. I live about two miles from this proposed development. Um, my brother lives on, he, he lives in Perry's Place. He was the first house there. He is at work and could not be here tonight, but I'm just, I'm, so I'm not speaking for him, but I'm speaking for me. And all I can say is I don't know how this is going to benefit Mount Pleasant at all. No disrespect because everybody has to make a living, but I don't see how it's going to benefit anyone except the developers. Um, I don't see how you all in good faith could really consider if you're thinking of benefiting Mount Pleasant and what's best for the citizens. All I can ask is think and if you would want it in your backyard and just answer that question with a good conscience between you and the Lord and vote accordingly. I think if you would just say, would you want it in your backyard and just vote accordingly?
Thank you, Ms. Thomason. Anybody else?
Shaw Daniels.
Shaw Daniels.
And I have property on either, on both sides of the proposed development. Part of my concern is, is the road, and I've lived there for quite a while, is that that road's narrow enough going down through there and there's so much traffic. I've seen traffic grow because at one time I was the only house on the left side of the road going all the way around, around, uh, South Cross Bridges Road. With the development that I've seen so far, the traffic has increased a lot. And, and the intersection there at the bypass sometimes can get a little tricky. I know that the adjustments that they made on the state road made a big difference, but there are still concerns there. And when we looked at this 10 years ago, one of the concerns and one of the reasons that the board at that time restricted the development to just the lots around the road was that the water line is undersized to, to service the community as it is. But then if you add all these additional homes, does the city have any grants in place or proposals to increase that water line up from a four inch to something more suitable to handle all the development? Because this is the only development that's taking place. There's additional homes being built on around the road. And those two, those two S curves right there can get pretty tricky at times. And I farm at my place on, on the south side and I farm on the north side of this development and try to get a tractor with a Vader or some other type of equipment down that road can be pretty, pretty tricky at times because with the new mailboxes that have been built recently, and you don't really have a shoulder like Jake had mentioned earlier. So you, you almost have to pull up and stop, let somebody buy, pull up a little bit more, stop, let somebody buy. So if, if this annexation of the road, is that going to mean that we're going to widen the road from the bypass on out past the second entrance into this development? Because the, the other, the other access that I see that's not listed on the drawing is right in the curve coming up, up into the bigger field to the backside. Uh, so that's a little concerning, like someone else had mentioned, coming around that curve and somebody's just pulling out. Uh, there's a good opportunity for some concern there. So that would be part of my concern is if you do consider this, to make sure that when we start looking at the total package, who's building the roads, who's going to be maintaining the roads, what type of shoulders, what type of curves, what type of drainage, what type of sewage system and all that stuff is, 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 I want to, to make sure that everybody takes that into account, too.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Rodney. And those are really good points and that's not going to be at the expense of the city. That'll be at the expense of the developer because that, the city's not able to.
Rodney, you got anything else?
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
I, I understand that that's at the expense of the developer. What's the governance over that to actually say this is what is necessary with the traffic study? Is that the city will be annexing the road and that come down and the planning commission saying this shall be done or is it a matter of an on your honor?
It would, no, it would have to be built to certain specs, that there would be a bond in place and we'd have to expect, we would have to inspect that it was built to the specs and we inspect all of our utilities, just like even here in the city. If you're putting in over there on Brookside, water and sewer, the developer's paying to do that before they can put dirt over it, we're inspecting it. And then if there, if that road is going to be something that we're going to maintain, we're going to inspect it and make sure it was built to our standards. That wasn't done maybe 20 years ago, but that's certainly the current requirements.
So it's to be governed by the city's zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations and it would come back before this commission.
Yeah. Good questions.
Any other comments? I think I'd like to make a recommendation that, that we continue this till the, to the 16th at 5:00 PM till we can get everybody here, where three people aren't making a decision.
We were not aware that we weren't going to have everybody here.
And then also that we could look at whether the R2 was actually published.
No.
So maybe we could, we could do that on Thursday at, at 5:00.
Will we continue this meeting? Uh, if we find out that the notice did not say R2, do we want to continue it to July?
What's your recommendation?
If it, if it didn't say R2 in the paper, I do think it's best to continue it, um, so that we can put the notice in the paper.
Did you pull the notice off the?
I've been working on it now, so.
Okay.
Do we need a motion for that?
Yes.
Yes, we've motioned to continue to Thursday.
Motion to continue to Thursday at 5:00.
Unless we need to push it further, I make that motion.
A favor. So are we, any, that finishes that, that all. We'll, we'll regaleen on that portion of it on Thursday at 5:00. Uh, number eight, do we have any site plan requests?
There are none.
All business?
There is none.
Do we have any other business? Uh, board and staff comments? Anybody? Bobby?
Well, I do want to thank everybody for coming. Appreciate everybody's comments. We're all learning all this together, so I just appreciate everybody.
Do we have any more citizen comments that didn't sign up? Mr. Morales?
Yes, thank you. Does that mean we're going to have to do all this again?
No.
They're.
Because they didn't hear the information.
It's recorded.
It's all recorded. If you want to come back.
Yeah, but you guys know what I'm saying. Yeah.
You know, I don't think that's right.
I also don't think it's right for the city that three of us make this decision and there should be five up here, even though we have a quarter.
We knew one was not going to be here, uh, that, and we didn't know the other one wasn't going to be here, so we did, we learned that a quarter to six tonight.
Okay. Are you going to vote again on Thursday?
We will vote on Thursday if we find out that the R2 was published. If not, we will probably not regaleen until July.
Okay. All right. And how will we get notice of that?
You're getting a notice right now for Thursday.
Notices are in the paper and notices are posted to City Hall.
They'll post a notice on Facebook also.
Yeah. Well, just like we do every meeting.
Yes. But if you're on Thursday, how?
But today you're getting a notice of the continuation of today's meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm talking about if you were going to have a meeting in July.
Right, right, right. I was just thinking, if anyone else, you couldn't have been here, you know, how are they going to know that it's going to be voted on Thursday?
We can do our best with social media, but everybody that's here had a notice of today's meeting.
Yes, ma'am. All right, thank you.
Thanks, George.
Well, thank you.
Anything else, Rodney? I get a motion to adjourn?
I might.
A favor? Cheers.